Oh, I'm surprised that they didn't do a better job than the color.
It's pretty bad.
Yeah, but if it's not done on Friday, so I don't have to go to you. If the color went down, you have to ask.
You know, we were gonna.
You know, my mom got there.
The time is five thirty P M. On Monday, November seventh, and I'd like to call this work session to order. It's a pretty light agenda today, but first we're going to start off with city updates. So, Miss Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council. It's also light on city updates this evening. I only have two or three. First, the mayor would like to extend to the public the invitation for the December Community Connections. It is scheduled this coming Friday, February the first at ten A M. At the Lucero Library on thirteen fifteen East Seventh. And the public is welcome to submit questions ahead of time by sending the questions to mayor@pueblo.us. The Community Connections is also live on Facebook Live, so questions are taken during the session as well. Moving on to the next update, it's a very slight ARPA update with only one agenda item this evening. It's the second reading and final public hearing and approval for the agreement with the Pueblo Community Health Center for the purchase and sale of the real property at thirteen oh two East Fifth Street in the amount of the four hundred and thirty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy one. And Executive Director Donald Moore did present at a work sessions, and he will be on Zoom this evening to answer any questions during public hearing, if you have any. To move on to the third update, I would just like to remind the community that your idea, your neighborhood project is opened for the review committee to see that. The city has received a number of applications so far, and the application period is open until this, I think, Thursday, November the thirtieth at five o'clock. The application is available on the city website, but if you have any questions, you can also email youridea@pueblo.us. And the last update is we do not have yet the date, scheduled date from for Gil Romero to want to meet with council on the legislative agenda for twenty twenty four. So as soon as we we get that set later this week, we'll send everybody out either the doodle poll about the date or just the email when he is available to see what dates it would work best for him. And that does conclude city updates. Do you have any questions or direction for me?
Just as a, so it's either December eleventh or December twenty sixth for Mr. Romero. Okay. Questions from council? Councilor Flores?
I had a gentleman come up and talk to me. He had made a presentation. It's probably been six months in which this this person had an idea. And he's kind of, he does concrete work, but he also does, like, I don't know if anybody has seen the tables out at Menel Palace Park. They're chess tables, and he does really nice work. And he came to council, made a presentation about adding some smaller skateboard parks at Rigosa Park, City Park, and I can't remember the third one. But in any event, in many ways, it really wasn't a construction project. He considers himself an artist, and he comes up with these ideas. And we gave, all of us gave him an affirmative kind of consensus that we wanted to do this. And now he's now been put in a position where he's going to have to bid it like it was a concrete job, even though it was his artistic idea of of his planning. And I'm wondering if you could look into that. The gentleman's last name was Rivera. Brian, Brian Rivera.
Thank you, Councilor Flores. And we can check again when the Public Works Director comes into the room. But the only thing that has to be bid is the concrete, not his connection or his artistic work with it. Because it is in a city park, it does meet, it is in the cities parks, not in the city park. It does fall within the area of the requirement for the appropriate procurement. So the concrete itself has to be bid, but not his, not his artistic work or his work with the youth. But we'll ask again when Andrew does come into the room.
Entire project is going to be considered concrete work. Have you have you seen the tables that, I mean, that, you know, all, every little piece of that chessboard, everything there is concrete. And and I was just thinking, I mean, we wouldn't be even thinking about this right now. But it was his idea of, because he was looking at as a piece of art. We're looking at as a, as a, as a concrete job like he's pointing a sidewalk. It just seemed unfair where you have, he considers himself an artist. So if you have an artist that comes in with an idea like what we did on the, the gentleman that made the
The mural.
Presentation on the mural, we would never have thought about taking his idea and then forcing him to go bid with five other muralists, because this is, he had the template, he had the idea, and we gave him the job.
Yeah, I'll clarify for you, but it's just the concrete itself, the materials and supplies that are being bid out following procurement rules, not his artistic work with the design or the build or the labor.
You're saying that, oh, you're just talking about labor.
Materials and supplies.
Okay, and then, so what does he do just?
Then he then he takes, moves forward with his idea to include the youth in the construction, the design and the build of them.
Okay.
But we, I will still confirm that, and that's what's happening with the mural work as well. Your contract with Mr. Eric Sen, Eric Sen. Thank you, Saraceno, was for his artistic work, but the ARPA dollars for twenty five thousand then went to the Parks Department, who can purchase the materials and supplies.
I think, so it's probably miscommunication.
Maybe, but we'll still confirm with them, Andrew, the Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you. We're going to move along to our first and last presentation of the night, talking about Soco Small Business Development Center. So can I have Mr. Mr. Estrada to the podium, please? Hello.
Good to see you all.
You want to, can you turn on your mic, Brian?
Sorry about that. My voice usually carries everywhere, you know, so it's one of those things. Tonight I have with me Dr. Patty Erjavec from the President of Pueblo Community College. I have Amanda Quorum, our Executive Director of Pueblo Corporate College, where the S B D C falls under at Pueblo Community College. And we have our distinguished State Director from the O Edit Office for Colorado S B D C, Hannah Krieger. Right here. So Amanda is going to come up and say a few words, and then I will do the other presentation. She just wants to talk about the relationship of P C C and the S B D C.
Thank you. So Pueblo Community College has had the honor and been fortunate enough to be the host for the Southern Colorado Small Business Development Center for thirty plus years. The synergy that between the college as well as the Small Business Development Center is profound. Feel like the programs and the education that we provide individuals, it takes them and gives them the the technical skills or the skills they need. But for those folks who are looking to develop a small business, they don't necessarily have to go through one of our degree or certificate programs. But if they have a skill and they want to market that skill as a small business owner, the perfect place and the education that's provided through the Small Business Development Center is phenomenal. There's a lot of free education opportunities, low cost education opportunities, as well as free consulting and technical support. And so the value of the services that are provided through the S B D C are just unlimited, especially with Brian as our Executive Director, has done a phenomenal job of supporting the center as well as increasing the metrics and the numbers of the individuals served, the clients served, the number of hours that clients are getting consulting services, training services. And so just here to support the Small Business Development Center, as we do as their host, we provide in kind facilities, space for them, as well as supportive services.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So let me tell you a little bit about the S B D C and what we've done this last year. So we've come up with a new mission, and it's to empower Colorado businesses to thrive. And our vision is to be the premier trusted choice of Colorado businesses for consulting, training and resources. We've had the long term relationship and the benefit of being hosted by P C C for the last thirty years. The services that we provide, our clients are, I'm jumping ahead, sorry, our clients are small businesses under five hundred. Okay, we're a little unique here in Pueblo because of our demographic that we have. We do consulting services for profit businesses, and we support nonprofits as well. The only area that we're not able to really support them because we do not have the knowledge or a consultant that can handle that right now is helping them with getting the five oh one C registered and making sure that they hit all of those marks. But we are able to help them with all of the business aspect sides that are there. And we help in all industries and sectors. As I presented in the past, we have a multitude of different businesses that come to us for assistance, not just starting up, those that are already in business, those who are looking to exit out of business as well. And that's a new thing that we're gonna give you just a little glimpse tonight about what we have, an exit strategy for businesses, for those individuals who are getting ready to leave their business as they go to retire and they don't have someone to take over that. The services that we work off of are, we focus on free confidential consulting, free or low cost educational training and webinars. And we are the premier resource connector for resources here in Pueblo. We are an award winning S B D C. In twenty twenty two, I was elected the Colorado State Star for our S B D C network for the innovative programming and things that we're doing. Twenty twenty two Business Person of the Year for the Latino Chamber. Twenty twenty three, we ran for the State S B A Innovation and Excellence Award, and we won that, which then took us on to compete regional level and then nationally through the United States. We did win the regional award. We did not get the full U S award, but it puts us in the top ten S B D Cs in the United States due to our programming and innovation here in Pueblo, Colorado. This is my office staff. I have a very small team, but we're mighty. I'm the Executive Director and Catherine Coordinator is my other full time employee who handles all my educational programming and coordinating and all of our social media that you see out there. And then I have two part time individuals. One is Prudence Aragon, who is a work study. She's a return to earn student that we call at P C C, changing her career at fifty and doing something different and wanting to learn, very valuable. And then I have my part time office assistant, Jackie Jimenez, who's been my assistant for the last eight years that I've been at Pueblo Community College. And then right now we have five consultants, all with a different specialty area. We have Alan Tormolin, who will handle basic business items, but his biggest area where he really focuses on is getting that loan, getting that packet prepared, making sure that we're able to help them, making sure they're able to fill out their grant applications correctly. We work on that. Kurt Matic helps me with all of those clients who come up with that idea and that startup that want to learn and want to focus on getting that started. Paula Robin does all of my intake consultations because we require everyone to take a consultation where they come in, and they tell us what they need and where they're at, and we ask all these questions so we know that we're giving them the best possible service. Judy helps with all our business plans, and Cat Fox is our technical consultant. And with, I'm going to show you some of these programmings, but as you all know, we did the Female Founders. We've also worked with Community Navigator Program. And through the use of ARPA funds, we've been able to help two hundred and twenty five businesses in the last two years now have their full fledged e commerce sites set up. So they are open seven days a week, twenty four hours a day, and they have that access to their clients. Here's a look at what we did in twenty twenty two. I thought this was going to be our biggest year, but we're blowing it out of the water for twenty twenty three. We had four hundred and two clients. We had sales increase of two million dollars. We consulted eleven hundred hours. We helped seventeen businesses start officially that met the S B A requirements for that. We created a hundred and twenty five jobs and we capital formation four point five million dollars through grants and loans that our clients received. Twenty twenty three is now, whoops, I hit it too many times. Sorry, guys. Twenty twenty three, there it is, is going to be our biggest year yet. Right now we're at five hundred and one clients. We have twenty two business starts. We just sent out a survey over the weekend, over the holiday weekend. It came back. We now have fifty six people who we have officially started businesses for this year. We haven't, don't have all our full numbers for the other items reported exactly yet until we calculate all that. But we have consulted for twelve hundred hours this year. Here's a year to year growth program. You could see in two thousand nineteen, we had a hundred and seventy clients. I took over in twenty twenty. We grew that number to one hundred and eighty, and now we're sitting at five hundred and one clients. By the end of the year, we will have about five hundred and fifty clients. We will consult almost two thousand hours to help these different business individuals with what they need. Here's our training and specialty events. A lot of you have come to our three main events, our holiday pop up, our Small Business Week information. We added a new one, Christmas in July, which is three events where we have that networking aspect, so they can come, they can take a look at, meet their community, show their products, make some money while they're doing it, and we do that three times a year so that they can build their network. We have started Startup Pueblo. We host that meeting the second Tuesday of every month where all individuals who are starting up their business come and get together. It's a networking group so that they can work together on that. We do business starting today. Classes are held the second Monday of each month in partnership with the library. We hosted the library. It's a three hour course that gives them all of the information that they need to get started. And then we go on the journey with them through their consulting. Thanks to you and your help with the ARPA funding, we were able to graduate, as of today, twenty three individuals who attended the Female Founders. Are, we have a total of thirty two because of the Chaffa donation that we did this initially with. But through the ARPA funding, we were able to graduate an additional twenty three. They all got education with a life coach, and they all got their e commerce sites set up for them along after taking that eight week course. They keep asking when we're going to have a reunion class, things like that. So we've got to figure out how we're going to do that. We did a lot of work in early childhood. We do leading edge for childcare. We also are the only S B D C center in the state that hosts a early childhood business conference. This will be our third one coming up in April of twenty twenty four. One of the biggest things that I'm proud of is I partnered with Human I T and Visa, and in our community alone, I was able to distribute six hundred Chromebooks with my staff and through this organization to help small businesses, entrepreneurs and people who were adult learners going to take education. The other four hundred, because I committed to a thousand, went through other S B D Cs throughout the state that we partnered with. But that was a really rewarding program. Everybody needs that access to technology. Here are webinars and training topics that we do every year, monthly H R training, QuickBooks training, vision model canvas, business model canvas. You guys can look at that slideshow there. What we have coming up in twenty twenty four, I just caught a typo when I was reviewing this beforehand, so it's not Small Business Week, April twenty seventh through May third of twenty twenty three. It's through twenty twenty four. Like I said, we will have our specialty network and pop up events for those individuals. We just were awarded, not just our center, but our organization as a whole, the another year of our S B D C tech source, which provides cybersecurity, education, implementation, tech commercialization, tech partnerships to bring those different types of businesses into our community and into our state. One of the main reasons that we're here today is not just to say thank you for your support in the past with these other programs, but the S B D C is in need of funding. Our current S B A grant does not cover the demand of the services that we have. We are budgeted to support two hundred people and consult four hundred hours. We exceed that tremendously, so I have to raise funds. So what we are asking the city for is fifty thousand annually, starting in twenty twenty four, if they are able to help us with that. Where that money will go is to increase our consulting because there is the need there that you'll see, we'll be able to hire more consultants to meet that requirement. We'll also, through our recruiting, we'll be able to do more outreach for it, our programming, we'll be able to do networking, have other events and more program development. And then we'll be able to do more seminars and webinars for training because we do have to pay those instructors. Here's a little quote I wanted to put up there for you. Whenever you see a successful business, someone once made a courageous decision. It's a big step to open your business. You can scan that Q R code and join our newsletter so you can see all of the things that we do. We're active on social media. And that's the part I had. I wanted to make sure I left Hannah a few minutes, because she wants to tell you a couple of things that are happening. Time goes by so fast when you're up here. So you got two minutes. Yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Krieger. I'm the State Director for the Colorado S B D C Network. Thank you for hosting Brian and me tonight. Thrilled to be here in support of Brian's incredible, incredible work and center here in Pueblo. And wanted to share quickly about how we're structured as as a network. So we are hosted out of the state government in the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. And then we have host organizations like P C C here in Pueblo, hosting fourteen centers around the state. We have an S B A grant that partially funds the work that we do. In order to draw down those federal dollars, we have to match, match that grant locally, dollar for dollar, in order to draw that down. So we are, we've made an ask of the state legislature to increase their funding, and we're hopeful that that'll happen in the coming year. And we also ask our center directors to raise money locally to support the community. Given the return on investment, it's a, you know, it's an investment in each community, but we believe it, it gives back more than what what we all invest in it dollar wise. Okay, I got a minute. So one, I wanted to share just a couple of the things that we're doing at the state level to support our centers, including the one here in Pueblo. We are really focusing our efforts on making our network a collaborative network that shares resources to maximize the, you know, the little, the few resources that we do have. And what that looks like is we're investing in some technology that'll support both the staff and their clients. So an example of that is market research. So we have invested in some software that is for use for all of our consultants and our staff to help business owners do market research. They may not be able to afford on their own. They get that free of costs. Another thing is there's, you know, Brian mentioned it, a silver tsunami. We've got a lot of people retiring right now with no plan to exit and pass on those businesses. Vital services that may just go away. And so we've created an exit planning program to support business owners in not only understanding the valuation of their business, but building value in it and then looking for options to exit, whether that's employee ownership or selling their business. We are taking them through the many options, and I've gone over, so I'm going to stop right there.
And they said, we're fine.
Oh, okay. The blinking red. Presentation tonight, so you can, you're fine.
We're not used to that, you know, it's easy on track. What else did you want?
Uh, I mean, that's, that's, I can go into more detail of other programs, but I think, you know, the exit planning program is a, is an example of where we're seeing a need and a gap across the state. And particularly in rural communities where if there's only a few people doing those services and then those people retire or decide to step away, we're leaving our communities in a really bad place. And so we're looking to solve those those problems with solutions that can be applied, no matter how big of an S B D C we have in that area, that there's statewide support so that business owners and clients have have those resources at their fingertips. Well, great. Thank you so much for that presentation, S B D C, both state and locally. Questions from council? Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both and everybody for coming to present. You know, the Small Business Development Center has been around for how long now? Well, over ten years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years.
Yeah, in some shape or form. When it first started, it was in one room in Pueblo Community College. One individual, he mainly did leading edge and answered a few questions for individuals. And the need has grown through the years, and then there wasn't such a demand for it changed, but now there is a demand again for it. So it's thirty years now here in Pueblo.
You all do great work. How do you find that folks find out about the S B D C?
One of the things when I took over in twenty twenty, it was focusing mainly on education. Because if you educate, then they'll learn about the other services that are available. So we do a lot of different classes. We offer eight different educational opportunities every month throughout the P C C, or throughout the S B D C, excuse me. And so what we do is we really focus on giving them that piece, and then every time we speak with them, we can help you with this, we can help you with that. And we're really active on social media, so you'll see something that's always going on with social media.
Do you find it's maybe more organic kind of word of mouth, folks saying, hey, if you're trying to start a small business, this is, these are the folks to go see?
I think I've gotten really popular over the last three years because every phone call that comes into our offices, somebody told me to call Brian Estrada at the S B D C, you know, and so it's like I may have met them or somebody else said, give Brian a call at the S B D C, and then we helped them through that. So it is a lot of word of mouth because we are doing good work, I think. Because if you see on that year to year report that I showed you, our client satisfaction is ninety six percent. And if you look at the attendance for our classes, that's where I think it happens. Go learn this because everybody wants to learn something. Everybody's like a lifelong learner. They want to be able to learn some, some opportunity, something new.
My last question, do you do like exit interviews as folks go through the program?
Our consultants meet with them each time they put notes in that, and then we really never say goodbye to a client. We reach out to them and say, it's time to schedule your next consultation. They're like, I'm really busy right now. My business is doing well. Call me back in three months, four months, and that's how we raise that. We never have had to say goodbye to anybody in the time that I've been there. So we don't do exit interviews as of yet, you know, but that is something that we can definitely look at if we need to.
Client satisfaction. You want to talk about the client satisfaction survey?
Client satisfaction survey? What do you want to talk? Go ahead. You were on.
Oh, I was on, okay. One thing we do is send out client satisfaction surveys after consulting sessions. So they can rate their experience, and then there is an open text box to provide feedback. So.
So it kind of does happen.
So it, we get feedback on a regular basis that both, you know, Brian reviews in his center, we review at the state level to address any concerns that arise.
I think that's great. I think the non departmental budget request of fifty thousand is a good idea and a well worth investment into our city.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Maestri?
I don't have my budget book with me. Is this already on our, it's not, so we would have to add the fifty thousand dollars. You know, actually, just out of curiosity, what is the process for the non departmental request? Because we've already ran our budget. We're about ten and a half million over now. And now we have another person coming and asking, don't they, don't you have like a protocol where they have deadlines that they should be asking for money by? So that they're in the original budget request?
Councilor Maestri, in my last four years, I've seen it done in multiple of ways. So originally, there was a list that then was added to or subtracted from based on the organization called or emailed the mayor's office for request. Council members suggested adding an organization independently, and those were added through a letter. A letter goes out in early July from the mayor's office into June and requests the requests their their request by August, mid August or so. This particular one, if council approves, the budget is on for second reading this evening. So it can, you can either direct, there'd be a couple of options, I believe, and we check with city attorney to either direct out a general fund in twenty twenty three or direct out a general fund in twenty twenty four. But with your direction, add, so we don't miss the S B D C in next year's June distribution of the letters of of non departmental. It's time for non departmental submission, so we can do any of those different options.
Yeah, I think we need to, because when we get the budget, it is based off the mayor's recommendation. So, I mean, it could be possible that application went through, it was denied, and somebody else is in front of us again. So it comes, all the budget is based off the mayor's recommendation, based off of those applications. And so like, you know, it would be fairer to everyone if you had a requirement, they met the deadline rather than adding, because like I said, we're already over ten million off of what we expect for revenue in twenty twenty four.
Just just for confirmation, it wasn't that Brian missed a deadline, it just was not submitted or the request for.
No, I realize that, but if we have, I mean, we're going to put a protocol in place, a procedure and stick to it. Otherwise, we're going to have people outside of an already agreed upon budget, and then we're constantly taking it out of the fund balance. So I would just like to see some sort of procedure put in place that we follow and adhere to.
Councilor Warner and then Councilor Flores. Sorry, Councilor Maestri, was that it?
Thank you.
Councilor Warner.
I was just going to point out to the public mainly that the last two years, that's all we've done is is sat up here and doled out money, and that money's gone. So. So there's definitely gonna be a lot of different things happening over the next couple of years.
I wanted to talk about financial resources, because I think you guys do an incredible job when it goes to providing information to people that want to go into business, especially with their business plans, their pro forma financial statements. I know you do all of that. And I know that in many cases, the financial resources is the authorization of or approval of SBA loans. But my question has to do with additional resources or connections that you have. Because I think that's the number one issue. Some people don't want an SBA loan, but they might need to buy a van or they might need to buy equipment on a smaller scale. Could you talk a little bit about those connections and those resources that people can depend on without having to go to the SBA?
Yeah. I'm gonna talk about two that we work with a lot here in our area. And then Hannah may configure in on a couple others. But one of our big partners in helping individuals get the loans, because there's not a lot of grants out there now. And so when you read through the grants, you gotta meet all of the different requirements, and you gotta look at what is actually for this grant, what is the reporting capacity, what is the whole process to get it? And it discourages a lot of individuals to apply for those types of grants. So we do a lot with neighbor works here in Pueblo. They are working with businesses that are just starting up. They'll give loans based on if they can pay. They look at the whole process. They ask them to do a business plan. They ask them to provide financial statements. We also work with an organization called Energize Colorado, who you need to be in business for at least two months and show that you have that. It used to be that they wanted to see you in business for at least a year, but now they put it back to two months to see if they can do that. So our consultants review those documentations with them, help them get the application together. And that's how we're helping funnel some of this money that they need for vans, for $50,000 to get their lease set up, to get what they need. But one of the things at my center, we are not there to push you to get a loan right away. We look at the whole process and say, what can you do with money that you have? Do you have $5,000 to start this? This is what we can do to help you before you get in debt. And we have other organizations as well.
Yeah, we also work with a number of nonprofit lenders. It could be a $5,000 loan, it could be a $10,000 loan, really looking at what the business needs. So that's what our consultants are trained to do, is not just steer people towards an SBA loan, because that might not be the right fit. It's really providing a number of choices and outlining what are the benefits, what are the drawbacks of each of those. We also have a statewide access to capital program that walks folks through what do they need to do to be ready for debt financing, if that is the route that they choose to take? And what does that look like? What are the different options? And really laying out that landscape for them. So we definitely, though we are funded by the SBA in many ways, we are not steering people only to those loans.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Atencio, and then Councilor Warner.
Yeah. Say again, how many businesses started up this year?
As of, once we have to look and make sure they meet the requirements, we will. But after the survey that came through, when I did this presentation, we had 22 that did meet the requirements. But now that we sent our yearly survey out, we've got a lot of feedback, and the number on the report showed 56 this year. So once we see if they met the possible requirements that the SBA requires that, which means they have to have consulted with us a certain amount of time, they've had to spend money to get their business started, they've had to have some type of sale, and that's what we'll look at. But as of now, it's 56 this year.
Did you say 125 employees?
125 jobs is what was recreated in 2022. This year, we're probably looking at like 169.
Do you have any idea what the pay range was?
It's gonna be minimum, minimum wage, basically, because they are small business owners. And the biggest issue that they have is, I can't pay $20. So they're hiring their friend. They come together and open the business together, and it's a husband and wife that are doing it. And it counts as jobs according to the SBA. But then when they bring on an individual, it's generally minimum wage to $20 an hour.
That's usually the biggest, that is the biggest problem here in Pueblo, is that businesses know that they can pay minimum wage. And you might have seen the paper the other day where median income in this town is much, much lower than the state and national average.
Yes.
And businesses and organizations, even the city knows that. And so they can pay a lot less than everybody else, and that's the reason we have a 20-something percentage poverty rate. I'll give you an idea. The people down there on the Lower East Side, the economic dashboard says the median income for this town is 57, 54, whatever it was. That's nothing, down on the Lower East Side, that's not even close. Probably half of that, probably even less. So how do we combat that? How do we raise the pay for people? I mean, even executives in this town get paid less than everybody else in the state.
Yeah. I think, for my personal opinion on that side, is we do have to shop small. We have to support our small businesses so that they can make more money. And then it can be reflected to their individuals that are working for them. Because when you look at it, if you spend $1 on a small business, rather than a large corporation, 45 cents of that dollar is going directly back into our community because we're supporting those small individuals who are working for the minimum wage. There's another sale. If they raise the sales, we've got that incentive there. The other, the bigger picture is, I do think exactly what you're saying. We have to educate other people, and we have to look at the jobs that we're bringing into Pueblo so that we can support to pay those higher wages. Because we know we don't have a lot of high-paying jobs, you know, when they come in. So we definitely need to do that. But my thing is always shop small.
It's just a matter of taking advantage of the workforce is what I see more than anything.
I can see that as well.
Town does it. And it's not like some people are out there paying living wages when they don't have to.
Right.
Councilor Warner?
What type of businesses started up? I mean, the last time we talked, it seemed like it was Etsy-type businesses, you know, candles and scented soaps. And can you tell me what you've got going that's a little bigger than that?
Yeah, we do have some construction companies who come to us because of privacy standards. I can't give names of those, but we do have those particular. We do have a lot of more technical people coming in. We have a lot of individuals who are starting their marketing companies and their social media-type companies because Pueblo is catching on to the fact that we need to use social media, we need to use that marketing. We need to be able to make these things happen and support, and people are realizing it takes a lot to stay on top of that social media. So we have several of those. We have a wave of doulas starting businesses here. And so I don't know what the change is there, but we have several of those. We have one in particular who is doing a new technology. It's a new way of looking at math. And she received an SBIR Tech Source Grant, which gave her her first $150,000. We just finished Phase Two of that, that is gonna give her another $350,000 so that she could promote this education and this learning-type individual there. We do do a lot of the e-commerce-type businesses because that's the easiest to start. And after COVID, what happened is a lot of individuals said, "My side hustle can make some money. I'm gonna turn that into my business." So when you come into my center and you talk to it, and I say mine, it's all of ours, but it's mine. We come in and we say, "Okay, what do you want to do with this business? How much time can you put into that?" And they're like, "Well, I want to put all my effort into that." I'm like, "How are you gonna pay your bills? Do you have a year's worth of your salary to keep this business going? How are you going to make ends meet?" And they're like, "Well, I'm gonna have to quit my job." I'm like, "You can't quit your job if you don't have a year's worth of salary to work on that. So let's see how much time you can put into this business, and then let's see how much you can make the first year. Then let's see how much you can make the second year, and let's grow that process." I have one client who has an auction company, and she moved in with her parents so that she could work full-time on this. And she's in her mid-50s. And so with this auction company, now it's grown to do over $3 million a year. And we've been working with her for three years. So there's a lot of different individuals who come, but I'll take the e-commerce businesses first because of the fact that it gets them started, gets the visibility, and then they can move into that e-commerce, into that brick-and-mortar building.
Okay. And then you're servicing all of Southern Colorado, correct?
I am serving Pueblo. I service Warfino County. I service Fremont County and Custer County. And so I will be having these same presentations with each of them, asking them for support for each of their.
Now, the numbers that you gave us for new businesses, were those all city businesses? Or is that all of Southern Colorado?
I would say there's probably a few other in the other counties, but where I spend most of my time, because the demand is here in Pueblo. In Warfino County, there's not a big demand for starting businesses. There is a support. In Warfino County, we did receive an EDA grant where we opened a maker space and a retail space there. And so we're offering support to help those businesses grow there. So that'll be seven businesses that will help from that side there. Custer County, they want the education. They want to know what the services are. No new business is really happening in Custer County. And Fremont County, we don't have a lot of requests there. The requests that we work on, we do, when we get them, we do help them in regards with that. So most of those businesses will be here. I can't give you the exact, because I don't know all the clients that said that we started that business with them.
Okay, all right. I think if anything, this should come out of Petco's budget. I mean, I'm always saying that things need to come out of Petco's budget. And I think this could be a good possibility for that. We can definitely do it. We've done it before. We can do it again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Graham?
Ms. Solano, I was wondering if this would fit under an ARPA ask? And we could use the remaining money from the small business grants that wasn't all allocated out?
Council President Graham, I would have to defer to the city attorney to make sure that we were in compliance with ARPA with respect to the different quadrants and types of businesses. And so I'll just turn it over to... He's looking at me like, "Thanks, Laura."
That was not my look, Ms. Solano. Council President Graham, members of council, I have not done an analysis. I would have to, again, I would have to do an analysis to see if this fit under one of the categories for the expenditure of ARPA funds. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure it fits neatly into any one of the categories, but I would do an analysis and get back.
Councilor Warner?
You were asking for a recurring 50 grand, so it definitely would not be an ARPA issue. Well, if you want to maintain it, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah. Thank you for catching that.
So, you know, I totally understand the ask for matching grants. The city plays that exact same game, too. I'm curious of what the overall target is to fundraise locally. And if it's 50,000, then you're good? Or what's the target, Brian?
Where 50,000 from you, I'm also asking the county for money, will be able so that I can continue to keep my coordinator. Based on the budget that I have now and the grant that I receive through the SBA, it only covers one salary. And so I have to break that up, and I have to go and ask different organizations for funding. So I partner with Chaffa Law and other events, and I ask them for specialty programming, just like what we did with the ARPA, so that we can do specialty programming there. So I am in need of $150,000, but I'm trying to break that up. That's just this year. And what that will cover is that will allow me to keep my consultants, that will allow me to keep the education coordinator, that will actually let me be able to make my admin a full-time possible employee to make that, so we have that support. And then she can also put on some other duties. But I look at distributing it based on where I ask for the funding. So I have partnerships through other organizations that I ask for money throughout every year to help work with that. And then I also focus to partner with all of the other organizations, like the Latino Chamber, the Greater Pueblo Chamber, Pueblo West Chamber, so that we can host events that help serve the community, and we all absorb the costs. That way, we can meet those budgets.
Is that 150K match gonna be pretty consistent, to Councilor Warner's point, if it's, you know, a reoccurring ask? Is that 150K gonna be pretty consistent?
It will depend. I think it would, but it will also depend on if the services, if there's a bigger demand for the services as it continues. Because we're out of COVID. It's not over, but we were out of the throes of COVID, and we're seeing more people now that are willing to do that. So I do think 2024 is gonna be even bigger with the need for those services. But as of right now, based on what my budget is, what I'm experiencing, what we may get from the legislative ask, that's the number where I'm at.
Yeah, and I can share that. You know, I believe the SBA grant will be pretty consistent. It is based on population. So the way, you know, when Congress approves the funding, they then look at the latest census and divvy it up. There's a minimum amount for smaller states, but they divvy it up based on population. So assuming our population doesn't take a huge dip in the state of Colorado, we should stay pretty consistent with funding.
Does state SBDC have a feeling about the ask in the, I'm assuming it's through the JBC?
It is through the JBC. So we are in the governor's budget right now. We have a, we currently receive about $160,000 total across the state from the state government. That, some of that goes towards the leading edge program that goes straight to the centers, and about 90,000 of that is just general operating. We got $475,000 in addition to that, previous, those previous funds, in the governor's budget on a recurring basis. We are waiting for the JBC to vote in January.
Yeah.
So we're keeping our fingers crossed, and we're doing our work to make sure they say yes.
And then that will be divvied up amongst the 14 centers throughout the state, correct?
It'll some of it be invested on a statewide basis, and some of it will be distributed, yeah. So we're trying to increase the state investment.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking because, you know, given that we have our own lobbyists for the city and the county does as well, if we can help, you know, write a letter of support or whatever that looks like for making that ask for our friends at JBC, I wonder if that could be a potential option for, if council would be interested. Councilor Flores, I know, did you have something else? I'm done.
Laura, I think in your presentation or your comments about where the money would come from, you indicated that we could, we haven't finalized, or we have not voted on the budget yet. So you said 2023 or 2024. And so we still have that option to include it in this year's budget.
Councilor Flores, by charter, the 2024 budget, council needs to approve by the first meeting in December.
Right.
Which is this last meeting in November always. The option for granting any sort of stipend in 2023 is this current year's budget, and it would just have to come from general fund. The option outside of including it in the budget for 2024, which then you wouldn't pass tonight and meet the charter requirement, is also just a direct distribution from the 2024 general fund. And that's what Councilor Maestri was referring to, is we just have to go straight to the general fund rather, or amend to the 2024 budget, which wouldn't pass tonight, and council would have to have a special meeting to meet charter requirements to pass the 2024 budget by the first meeting, by the first of December.
But since 2024 is only a month away, we also have the option of just using general fund money to fund the 50,000.
From the 2023 current budget, yes.
To clarify also, Councilor Maestri's comment that we're 10 million over, is that a true statement, that we're 10 million over, over what?
The 2023 and our finance director isn't in the room, so she can correct me when she's watching or hearing somewhere.
She's online. Alex is online.
I am here.
And I'm just gonna turn it over to the finance.
We're phoning a friend.
We're phoning... So I am just sitting downstairs, but the fund balance reserves, so the amount that we will be appropriating over and above the revenue is $10,742,023.
But we're really talking about non-departmental budget, and we're also talking about, you know, the zoo, which is a nonprofit, the art center. Those services that the city should be providing anyway. But we've always had a non-departmental budget for the seven years I've been on city council. And it's never been, it's never been explained as though that is causing us to be over our budget because we've always done it. We've given them increases throughout the year due to inflation. But it almost sounds like we are giving, you know, by giving the nonprofits and the non-departmental budget area, that somehow that's causing us to be $10 million over. I'm assuming when you say that, you're talking about how much our surplus is.
Yeah, so what I'm talking about is the general fund in total. So there's not a direct correlation between the amount... So there's not a direct correlation between the amount that we are spending into fund balance. To anyone line item.
Yeah, the better, the better question is if in fact we're over, how much of that you. Could part mentalize for the non-departmental budget items that we're giving. And, you know, the increases we gave the zoo, which is really our responsibility and, and all the others. It's got to be, it's got to be a lot less than ten million dollars.
So non-departmental is in the budget for nine million, twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-four. I do have the line item breakout that I can look at, but that's the category of non-departmental.
I, so given that we have our, the budget on the work, uh, regular meeting tonight, maybe we can talk about this later on. Just to be respectful of our guest's time, Counselor Atencio.
I think you can use all the time you want. I suggest that we do it out of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. We can do that before the end of the year. Put them on the non-departmental list. And that way, it is subject to yearly appropriation, by the way, every single that we do. So it's not like it's going to reoccur every year automatically. Some of those things can be taken off whenever we feel like it, but let me suggest that we do it twenty twenty-three. Put them on the department, uh, non-departmental list. And that way, because we do this all the time. I mean, we could do the twenty-two, twenty-two-four budget the same way. The day after we vote on the twenty-two-four budget. So it doesn't matter when we do it. It's just a matter of in two thousand and twenty-four. The proper procedure to allocate that money again, and everybody does it. So I would ask for support that we put it, that we appropriate the fifty thousand for the, you know, twenty-two-three budget. Coming out of the fund balance and then putting them on the list.
So that's the question on the table.
Clarify, it sounded to me like it's too late to put it on the departmental budget. But we could put it.
We can for this year.
I'll defer to my phone a friend up there. One way or the other, it's a general fund expenditure. It's either a general fund expenditure in twenty twenty-three or a general fund expenditure in twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-three, I suggest.
Yeah, so we could do it out of general fund for twenty twenty-three. And then I actually was speaking with our city clerk, Marissa Stoller. And I believe we could change the twenty twenty-four budget on the fly and still be able to pass it in tonight's meeting. But I would like to, if, if that is the direction, I'd like to make sure of that before we move forward with that.
The way they get fifty thousand for twenty twenty-three and fifty thousand twenty-two twenty-four.
I like that, two thumbs up. I think they're asking. I think we're, yeah, I think the proper direction is to give, take it out of the twenty twenty-three general fund. For their twenty twenty-four ask.
Doesn't.
I, I think.
Take it out of twenty twenty-three and then they'll be on the list for twenty twenty-four.
I'm a yes. I'm a yes.
Great. Counselor, so can I just clarify what the question is on the table? The question is. No, go ahead, Counselor Warner.
I just think this should be discussed when, when that comes up tonight.
Well, they need though, the amendment before we get.
They don't, they don't need it now. I mean, we're, you're basically asking for a vote right now. Yeah. We're not supposed to vote during work session.
Mr. Hippolyte.
Okay, so I, I just want to clarify for, for, for council's purposes. There, there are a few things going on here and I think it may be easier if we put them all on the table so you guys can have an informed discussion. So with respect to the two thousand and twenty-three budget, there are still two meetings left. So therefore there is ample opportunity for council to amend the two thousand and twenty-three budget to include their budgetary request for their expenditure in two thousand and twenty-four. With respect to Ms. Solano's comment, council does have a charter requirement to approve the budget. Before the first meeting in December of two thousand and twenty-three for two thousand and twenty-four. So council could, if it so chose, and again, I think this was to the finance director's point. On the fly, amend the budget that is being submitted to council tonight for approval to include this ask. From a legal perspective, I wouldn't advise that because that language would be done on the fly. However, like any other budgetary request, council would have the full and fair opportunity after this budget is approved. To amend that budget to include that expenditure for two thousand and twenty-five for the organization. So, so I guess just because council approves the budget today, without that fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four. Does not mean council at a later date cannot come back and include that request for two thousand and twenty-five. Either in the two thousand and twenty-four budget or in the two thousand and twenty-five budget later. Does that make sense?
That's what I said.
Fair point.
I, then I guess let's just have direction of moving forward for giving SBDC the required, the ask. Of fifty thousand dollars and that, so that's the ask, right, Brian, is fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes. I'm, I'm working on my two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three budget right now is the year that we're in, because we start in July. So yes, it is for two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay. But it would come out of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about where the money's coming from. I'm just getting, needing direction to moving forward to giving them money, regardless of where it's coming from. Okay.
Yes.
Counselor Graham, Counselor Atencio, I'm a yes, Counselor Flores, Counselor Maestri. Counselor Warner. We're moving it forward. There you go, Brian.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your time and I'll present whenever you need me to, to give you updates, any of that information, but thank you.
Thank you for your time as well. And thank you, uh, friends from SBDC for joining us today. That concludes then the work session at six twenty-six PM and we'll pick up in about half an hour.